Okay. I'd like to call it order this September 26th, 2022, meeting of McCandless Town Council. Please, everyone, follow me and the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and two republics which stands.
One nation under God, divisive liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We always start off with a little paragraph on how we want these proceedings to go forward. We say that we work together for the betterment of our town. We all have an equal voice. We may disagree, but we will do so with civility and respect. Because in the end, we are all neighbors. A few announcements here. Our Heritage Center is having their second golf outing of the year on October 7th. It is on our website if anyone is interested in joining. I know I talked to representatives from there tonight and they still have some openings. But they're going fast. And then the EAC, we have two fall roadside cleanups that are scheduled. Again, more info on our website. They're October 15th and 22nd. We usually get a great turnout there, so those looking to do some volunteering and clean up our town. Recommend you look at that. Mr. Singer wanted to touch briefly on an issue.
I have an announcement. Just it's with great sadness and a heavy heart that Highland Fire Hall announces the passing of a life member. Andrew Misarias. Andy joined the department in 2007 at the age of 53. He had overcome every obstacle and task that was required to be an interior firefighter. In typical Andy fashion, he took it upon himself to further his abilities and be certified firefighter one and BBR technician over the years. He held multiple associate positions, including treasurer and secretary. Unfortunately, Andy has passed away, and at this time, we would ask for a moment of silence.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Okay, first up, is there any public comment on agenda items? The way this works is if you're in here in the chamber, come on up. Make sure you're signed into and how to reach you. Let us know your name and your address and your brief.
Iren Caliendo, 411 Hawk, and I'd like to address the last item under new business. The McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority is a vital community service that not only should be given financial support by the town of McCandless, but needs that financial support in order to continue to provide for our citizens. Council has a duty to do what is required to keep the community safe and thriving. This is how I want my tax dollars to be spent. Council must be good stewards and make the difficult decisions, even if it necessitates the taxes are increased to fund such services. Please find a way to strengthen our ambulance authority financially. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to comment on any of the agenda items? Nope. And for those that are joining us online, if you're new, write your name in the chat box, an address, and we can give you, we can call on you with a, with a mic request. Sandra, anybody here? Okay. Very good. Moving on. Era's the meeting minutes, the August 22nd meeting minutes were included in Town Council's packet. I'm sure everyone got the chance to look at those. I want to know, does anyone have any comments or edits or changes that need to be made before we vote on those? Hearing none? Okay. Can entertain a motion now if anyone would still move.
I'm gonna make motion to accept the minutes of last, last, last meeting.
Second, is there a second? Okay, everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Very good. Reports of committees. Mr. Casey, would you feel free running through these? Your connection okay enough to do that?
I hope so. You let me know if it isn't, please.
Sounds crisp.
Hopefully, everybody had an opportunity to review their checklist number eight. It was in our packet. Are there any questions? If not, I would like to make a motion to approve checklist number eight dated August 1st, 2022 to August 31st, 2022, totaling 907,671 dollars and 10 cents as submitted to each member of council and posted on the bulletin board and town website.
Second.
Yeah, can we do this part? Everyone in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? Okay, okay, Mr. Casey, continue.
Okay, hopefully Trish is in the audience.
She is?
Good. Did everybody have an opportunity to review the dashboard and company documents? And does anybody have any questions?
Y'all received the report. We're ahead of revenues from last year. We're below expenses from last year. We did receive as a future note, we did receive the additional ARPA deposit, so we now have that in full. That was happened in September. And we're also receiving state monies on time and as expected. Public safety is performing at 49% of budget. Public Works is at 31%. You'll continue to see that 31% drop closer to 26 or 27 as we get closer to December. Again, it's influx and due to snow purchases, ice purchases, ice purchases, sorry, salt purchases in January and February timeframe. So I feel we're in good shape going into the fourth quarter. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time. Thank you very much.
I guess next is the communications report. Any questions? Okay, let's move on to liaison reports. Dr. Ropa.
The MIDA hasn't had their meeting yet. It's coming up on Wednesday, so I'll report. Maybe.
Thank you. And, Mr. President, do you have anything to report on the North Hills Council of Governments?
We have no meeting this month. We're gonna have, there's an October and a November meeting, given the holidays, they pushed that one forward, so no meeting to report on until next month.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on Administration and Finance Committee items? If not, I'll hand it over to Councilwoman Zachary.
Thank you, Councilmember Casey. Staff reports for the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Hi. All right, so thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Zachary. We've got just one plan on the monthly planning report, the ridge, now on the final subdivision and land development plan. You all remember a couple of months ago, we went through the preliminary approval process for that. For the most part, you know, the plan is quite similar. There was one grading difference that was briefly discussed when we were, you know, going through the preliminary approval process. They will be submitting a modification request for that, basically for a two and a half to one slope instead of three to one in one small section by lots one and two. That would be, the grading essentially was being pulled back to save what the abutting residents referred to as some heritage trees that had been in the area for a long time or quite large. So that was in response to a neighbor request that they're working on, that the engineers will of course review that as soon as they have the information. Also, you will see in the report, we discuss a bit the external sidewalk along Curry Highway, sort of the Pine Brookville portion that we referred to in that whole discussion. That was previously being shown as on their private property limits. It is now being shown as in the PennDOT right of way. Again, some of these engineering details come out a little more, you know, a little more thoroughly when you get to that final plan stage. So they will need to submit a highway occupancy permit or an HLP PennDOT for that. We did ask them, since they hadn't had, you know, a full scoping meeting, can you at least get us something in writing to indicate that PennDOT is theoretically okay with the sidewalk, you know, pending their full technical review? And we did receive that emails directly from PennDOT were provided. So, you know, those are just a couple of material changes that Planning Commission is continuing to take a look at. They will be back next week at our next Planning Commission meeting, and from there, we'll see if they are on your agenda or if we, you know, continue to review into November. So unless you all have any questions on that, I'll move on to the zoning and Sado project section. Okay. So most of the working hours this month have been spent on reviewing the very first drafts of the actual zoning code that we've been, you know, anxiously awaiting, I think, at council and Planning Commission vote. So about 150 word doc pages and comments later. Yes, that was the uses chapter. We have a couple of chapters that are going to be ready to be brought to the Planning Commission next week. We're gonna give them a couple of weeks to, you know, just fully comment, review, anything that they want to send in, and, you know, we'll come back in November with another chapter. I believe there are five in total on the zoning side, and then the Sado, which is the subdivision and land development ordinance portion, you know, roads, how you can construct those lots, line closures, things like that. That will come after the zoning chapter. So over the next few months, we're expecting to deliver, you know, one or two of those at a time, give them a couple of weeks' comment. Once that's all buttoned up, we'll be ready to have a planning commission make a full recommendation and then pass it on to council and the open house public hearing that we'll have. So that's really, you know, what we're focusing on right now, getting these, if it makes sense enough that we're ready to show them to the public is, this is really kind of, you know, what's being recommended, at least at this first stage. In the meantime, on the engagement front, we published, I think I mentioned last month, we were about to go live with this as well, the commercial signage survey. So we have a little over 30 responses on that so far. Pretty good for a very specific survey like that on the stage of the project. They were available community day as well. So that's basically just to give an overview of, you know, big categories of sign types, not every type of sign you're gonna see covered in the code, but, you know, just so people can get a general look and feel of, okay, this is what a wall sign like on a building. This is what a polar pylon sign looks like. This is what, you know, we have illustrations and things like that. So residents can continue to respond to that on McCandless and me.com. Basically, you get to say, yeah, we think this makes sense in sort of a neighborhood oriented, you know, shopping center or a really car-driven area or an institutional area, things like that. So we're continuing to take those responses in. Probably we'll close the survey in a couple of weeks because that's when consultants will really be finalizing the signs chapter of the zoning code, because yes, they get their whole own chapter in the new code. So if you all have any questions on that, happy to answer, but if not, that's, that's my report.
Very happy to see everything moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Liaison reports. I think RJ pretty well summarized what's going on in the Planning Commission. Glad to hear that we have something in writing about that sidewalk with the PennDOT and the highway occupancy. I'm glad to hear that's, that's happening. Zoning Hearing Board from Councilmember Clunin.
Thank you, Ms. Zachary. The minutes will be made available in your packet as soon as they are available, but I do want to point out that this coming Wednesday, the 28th, the meeting will be starting early at 6:00 PM. That is a change and it has been posted, but we want to make sure in case any public would like to either zoom in or attend the zoning meeting this week, it will be starting at 6:00 PM.
It just doesn't really matter, that's because we have security.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big meeting.
Yes, yes, so we, and we've got one more for the month after, so we're gonna be really in certain early.
Um, and, and so, um, just to make sure that that's gonna be posted everywhere, because when there's ever a change with those public meetings, that has to be posted in like 130 places.
Yes, so, so we actually, unlike most of the other types of meetings that we have in the town, we have to place an ad for the zoning hearing board every single month because we have to include specifics about each appeal that's coming in. So that gives us the opportunity to republish all of the meeting details, including the time. I believe that went out in the McMail for last month as well. Pretty much everywhere that we can put this info, we've put it out there.
Perfect. Thank you. Just make, just making sure, time at the loose end. Thank you so much. Or is there any public comment on planning or zoning items? In-house or on Zoom?
Don't see either, Kim.
All right, then I hand it over to Recreation Committee, Councilmember Schwager.
No, I don't think, Carolyn's not online, is she? Okay, so I'll, I'll go through this. Well, the liaison, I don't have an update on the Activities Advisory Committee. Ms. Clunin, would you have an update on the Heritage Center?
Sure. You have the minutes from the last meeting in your package and at this time, I would like to invite Mr. Wall, would like to present discussion that the Heritage Center has been having on a name change. It's not, I hate to call it a name change, I would say it's more a an addition to the name to make it a broader to get, to get to the goals of engaging more folks in our Heritage Center would be the main purpose for this.
And that would be exactly correct. It's not gonna change what we do. Well, it may broaden what we do. It's not gonna change the basic function of our programming. We've asked in documentation to change the name of the McCandless Northern Allegheny Heritage Center to the McCandless Northern Allegheny Heritage and Cultural Center. The reason being for philanthropic organizations, for granting organizations, and to be recognized as original asset. We feel that, that we've been instructed by different philanthropic organizations that the term cultural center broadens the appeal to them, and it broadens what we can do as far as offerings. So we respectfully request, but we go ahead and do that. Again, it's not going to be a major change. It's going to change how we're identified. Were there any questions?
Um, I do, I do have a comment.
Yes.
I would like to say how delighted I am at how this Heritage Center has been advancing. When it was first put together by the taxpayers, the scope was so narrow and so limiting and which is the reason I put together this committee to try to get it to be more active and more part of the community and more encompassing and to engage the, the surrounding area, our area and other areas. So I am just so pleased how this committee has turned out and what you're doing, and I wholeheartedly support adding that addition to the name. And I couldn't be happier with all the use that we're getting out of that out of that building and that just the whole idea of that, because I always knew it had potential, but I was so afraid it wasn't gonna live up to that.
Well, Mrs. Zachary, you haven't seen nothing yet.
All right, okay, so I wanted to throw in my, my support of that and everything that you all were doing and changing the name, and I totally support it.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions that I can answer at this point?
My question just is to the solicitor, is there any formal process to this, or is this a simple, this is a head nod?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, you have mine. I think it's wonderful. I agree with Ms. Zachary's comments as well, yeah.
Would we need a formal resolution at a future date only?
It's just a committee name. So, I mean, we could put a resolution if that would be more helpful.
I think that would be helpful as far as more, more of a formal thing.
Yeah, but if there's no objections, we can put that together.
Okay.
The, the founding documents, excuse me, the founding documents will also need to be looked at and changed also, Mr. Solicitor, because the name was a big deal in that, so.
As I've been told, Mrs. Zachary, what has to be done is the original ordinance has to be amended to reflect the new name.
Okay, all right, just, just don't forget the founding documents, that's all.
Very good. Any comments from those to my left?
No, I think I've been clear on my support on engaging as many of our citizens in both McCandless and in the region outside, and I think this if anything we can do to make people more, feel more welcome and feel like this is something for them, an asset for them, I'm all for it.
We are trying to reach out to the other municipalities in the northern region. And we've been very successful in creating a lot of entrance.
Dr. Ropa, any comments?
I'm 100% in favor.
Mr. Casey?
Absolutely, 100% in favor.
Me as well.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate your support.
Yeah. Are there any public comments on Recreation Committee items that were just discussed? Anyone here in the chamber or anyone online? No? None? Town manager's report.
Um. I should ask, how do we usually, how have we normally gone through this? Because you have that.
Really, it's in your packets. Does anyone have?
And it's usually silence.
Eight plus on the first one.
Mr. Town, Mr. Town Manager, I really like how organized your report is. It's so easy to go through and understand and logical. I like it. Thank you.
I, I agree. It was very well done.
Thank you. Do you still give out gold stars?
Tell you what.
Okay. Town Attorney's report.
I'll say the same thing I usually say, that if it's in the packet, if you have questions, we can discuss it or have an executive session. The one thing I will direct everyone's attention to is the information around the fireworks law amendment. Please take a look at that. I included the actual statute and then three model ordinances from the Pennsylvania Municipally. Those are the primary options, but there's some movement around in, in that if you would like to regulate these in a particular way. At a minimum, I think it's important to reiterate the rules and ordinance, particularly as they relate to town-owned property, streets, parks, parking lots, et cetera, and how that would be treated, so folks know that they are not permitted to set fireworks on within that, in those areas. So take a look. We can have a discussion at a future meeting if it's council's interested in moving forward in ordinance of some sort.
So to summarize, the state said it's now the local municipalities that can regulate it.
Option to regulate.
Okay.
The state does have the 150-foot rule, but I think it's important, in my view, to make sure that's in our code as well as how we want to treat our public property with fireworks as well, to the extent it's unclear and.
I have a question in regard to our current committee that's looking at our noise ordinance. Does there need to be overlap and discussions between what, what's decided from council for this ordinance and what happens with the noise so that they're not in conflict with each other or?
I think they, no, I don't think there needs to be any working together between those two groups necessarily, because the fireworks are regulated in a little different way. It's not noise-based. It's either you can do it or you can't do it. And if you can do it, you can regulate when, meaning the date and the time of the day, the safety factor. Yep.
It was kind of, kind of a question I was gonna ask.
Yeah.
You know, my big concern, and I've had calls about fire, I guess, firecrackers, fireworks, what they're going to probably going off in the neighborhood. The most important thing is, it wasn't so much that we're worried about that, is what it was doing to the animals.
Oh, sure.
That the animals, it just, you can't get them settled down and keeping and, you know, I know we have the 150-foot for any animal facility, but we don't really designate that in here about.
Right, that's the, that's the model ordinance from the Municipally, but it's also 150 feet from any building. If you think about your neighborhood, I think there would be a challenge in most McCandless neighborhoods to find a location therein where you were setting fireworks off at least 150 feet away from a building or a vehicle.
And that's the current one on the state statute now, so it's just a matter of enforcement.
Correct.
On that is really.
That's unfortunately, I know, Chief Park and, and his, his folks unfortunately handled that.
So they also regulate it. If you can't do it after 10:00 or before.
Yeah, that's the 10:00 AM, 10:00 PM. Yep.
And that's more restrictions. So that's the minimum state block, and we can do more or less. Okay, or ban it all again.
And in the. Well, I think we have a, potentially, we would have to sort of look from a GIS perspective if there are locations in the town put them off within 100, that are outside the 150-foot zone. And then we may be able to ban it, but you have to make that legislative finding that there really isn't a place in your community to do so. I'm not sure in McCandless if that's the case, but I do know some other smaller boroughs and things along. Some of the other communities I represent, there would be absolutely no place to do that other than a public park.
And they still have to, when some of these vendors come in and they want to sell low-grade fireworks, they still have to have a permit, correct?
Not sure about that. That's, this doesn't regulate that. This just regulates the setting off the fireworks, not the sale.
I think they require a solicitation permit still to sell to the town, yeah.
If you're gonna set up in a parking lot, in a tent, you would have to get that.
What's the process if we want to look into this a little bit deeper?
I would say review the information that I provided, and I don't know how we want to do it, but add it to the agenda to discuss it, set up a committee to work through it. You know, whatever that might be. Yeah, whatever process you want.
We could just bring it up as old business next meeting, and that gives everybody two weeks to think about it.
Yep.
And then we can at least set our consultants off in the right direction.
Yep, yes.
Okay.
I know what my days are like. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Any questions for our town attorney? Didn't hear any, just wanted to make sure. Okay. Very good. Next up, old business. We heard back on our reapportion, our reapportionment ordinance. And RJ, do you have an update for us?
Do, don't worry. I know I have a laptop, but it's not a long presentation. We're gonna be quick. So we did, you know, our new town manager was very helpful in making a connection at the elections department so that we could get some feedback. Basically, what we heard was the county election districts, you know, they're definitely willing to work with us to, to update. However, they have a requirement that we do not, when we draw our own, you know, ward boundaries, that the county election districts have to tack to census blocks. Now largely, that was what we did when we designed our draft word map. However, there was one section from our reapportionment committee, and I'm gonna show you right here. Assuming this map will load, okay, it's not big. Right up in here, and I want to say Landau and Westview Road. When you look at this area here in a census block, this is an older version before we worked with the committee on it. You'll see that this whole section up here, the gray lines are the census blocks, which were removed from the final map, because, you know, notes. But anyway, you will see that there was this change to help this neighborhood here, which where you can see the parcel and road lines. It makes sense for them to actually be contiguous, however, this is where the census block is. This is a bit of an oddity, because this section of McCandless, I guess, was not, well, it's not technically McCandless, it's technically in Pine, but they vote with us in our, in our school district. Don't know the history there, but it's a couple decades old. I think it was just that their kids were all gonna be going to the same school except for these couple streets that were over the municipal border, which was normally right here. So because census blocks, they try to keep them close to municipal lines. But this is not a municipal line, so we just have a partial little block that we share with Pine. So unfortunately, it doesn't make quite as much sense as it would in our version. Also, the boundary cleanup that I did by hand on the map, as it turns out, won't tack exactly to those census blocks, so. Our options are basically to say, we want to, you know, go full steam ahead with our version here, since we think it makes sense for our voters, or we want to go back to a version that attacks census blocks. No mathematical changes, you know, it's, it's a pretty, maybe 10 people, you know? But I have since learned that if you do not have your ward in your election district matching, and I think Mr. O'Malley could, could give a little more detail on this, something really strange happens at the polling place where they have to have a special machine for you, and it's quite confusing, and that doesn't sound like a good idea. Yeah, so, um, depending on what our town attorney says, although I think I know where you're going. We should probably re-advertise a draft map tagging back to those census blocks, because it would materially affect a couple voters in, in that neighborhood.
Yeah, my advice was that we would have the redistricting commission bless this alteration, then proceed with advertisement of the block, just so we're dotting all the islands, crossing all the, it is, it's a material change, although it is de minimis in its impact. Although it is de minimis in its impact, but I think we should go through that process again. Um, in order to make sure that it's on all solid footing and not subject to challenge.
So my question for you would be, since it was, you know, our council president plus two other individuals that are pretty easy to get by email. Can we get a head nod from them that way? So we don't have to re-advertise a whole new public meeting if we're doing the hearing here?
I would do the.
Okay. So we want to, so I'm not sure how soon we can bring this back to council, maybe the November meeting.
Sorry.
Um, I know, I'll be emailing you tomorrow. Um.
Can I ask a question? I'm confused why the county has a say in how we deal with that of our home rule charter.
Well, so they don't. I mean, it's just that.
We could still stay with what we want, but then they'll have a separate machine for those.
But won't that fix when we, when the county redoes the districts, which is what our request would be?
No, because the county does legally, like per the state have a requirement, they have to petition essentially the state to approve their election district changes. So we petition them and then they petition the state. And the state's rule is you have to have those county voting lines match the census blocks. So we do not have to follow that.
Change the census lines.
Which they won't.
Which.
Which they won't do, but the census lines are based upon.
Oh, that's a great.
Our wards are.
Uh, no, they're not, uh, in which I also found out through this process because there were, you know, as you may remember from the boundary cleanup, nonsense lines cutting through the backs of parcels and backyards and things like that. Um, the Census Bureau does not release their exact methodology, but they do say that it is supposed to be based on things like roads, topographic boundaries, geographic identifiers, but not political boundaries. Um, although they do tend to kind of follow them. So but it's, it's just that no matter what we petition the county with, they can't deviate from.
Yeah, it's gonna pick that either way.
Yeah.
So to give a similar concept in Ross Township, there was a ward that had the state house district was split into within that district.
Mm-hmm.
So when you went there, you had to say what your street was, and there was a different machine for state rep raises. So essentially what would happen here is there'd be different machines for council races and.
Yeah. I understand. I'm just in this cleanup, you'd rather see neighborhoods together. And unfortunately it's not going to be possible here. It's, you know, it's, I'm just disappointed, but welcome to.
Oh, hey.
Welcome to government.
I appreciate that on a very personal level. Would not have spent a day doing that in GIS. But you know, it's good for us to know before we pass it. So.
So we're going to see a slight shift now to pick that area back up.
Yes.
And then we have to offset it somewhere else, I'm assuming.
Well, so that's the thing because thi- this is, you know, without the street lines and everything, but this is what we would go back to. This is the own census block that we actually divided in material fashion. Um, so based on, you know, I did not change my calculations for this because it appeared that we're, there were really only two or three houses.
Yeah.
Um, so.
So you're likely going to just loop that now.
Basically this, this part here excluding these two parcels will move back into Ward Two.
Okay.
So six parcels.
Okay.
A half dozen parcels or so.
Yes, although there aren't any in, in the one, can you see? Yeah, the pointer, there doesn't, there don't appear to be any homes that actually front on a McCandless street there. So I, I I'm not sure that anyone even. It's basically just these couple of people right here, unfortunately.
It's de minimis.
Yeah, you like that word?
It really is. I think it's something that we have to go through this all again, but.
Yeah.
We need to make sure that we do it right.
So if we were to get the committee back together, um, we could, I, I would assume somebody, you know, could bring the, yes, we're okay with it if that is what we received. Back by either, if we can advertise it in time, the next council meeting or the October one, if not. Um, in that case, we could probably put the ad in the paper midway through so that we could hit the public hearing again. Well, actually I think we have to advertise it by this Thursday if we want to hit the October meeting. So probably the best case scenario, if we want to be really thorough is second November meeting and then adopt at the first December meeting. Which still tracks with one, we've done this before.
There's no, there's no, there's no rush, right? There's no rush.
I, I don't think so. I mean, it's just.
Let's just do it right and do it slow. And RJ, write all this stuff down for posterity. So in 10 years from when they get the census again, and they're making fun of us because none of us are going to be here probably. And they're making fun of us for what the heck were they thinking that they can read your notes and know that we weren't crazy?
Yes, there are, there are written reports, um, until this moment. So we'll, we'll make sure to add it.
It gives people a bad name, these crazy.
Yes.
Even if we're here, we'll probably have forgotten.
Yeah, well, that's right.
So, all right, I, I'll, I'll work on making that pivot. And like I said, we usually pass this in November. Anyway, we were kind of just ahead of the curve right now. So.
Oh, God.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions for anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, and next up, the stormwater management, this is one that we had comments on last time and we, we had a couple tweaks.
Yeah, I reviewed the tweaks and I had no issues with the proposed language.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Um, yeah, Kim, did it, they gathered, I think you're the one had most of the comments. They gathered everything you want. Okay, thumbs up.
It was, it was good. I think Steve got everything. I don't think he missed anything. I think it's just a little clearer as who the town is and I appreciate that.
I can't take credit, Kim. I didn't draft it. I just reviewed it. I think, uh.
RJ and I worked together to, to.
Okay, all right. Um, I'm sorry. I'd like to give credit where it's due. Thank everyone, the whole team for making it more concise.
It's a great comment. Thank you very much, council member.
So we have represented some gateway engineers here that, I, did you guys offer mo- most of the ordinance? Okay.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any final questions for Kelly? This was, this, this isn't the first time we're seeing it. So.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ten internally identified ordinance number one, five, two, eight, commending article nine thirteen. With the town code of ordinances, stormwater management.
Dr. Robin? Okay, any other final comments before we vote? No, okay, everyone in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say no. Motion passes. New business, um, I don't know, um, if chief would want to come up and talk about this or this is basically, we have a grant to pay for half of the body worn cameras that our police officers are going to get. This is to apply for the, um, another grant to make us whole.
Yeah, there is a, there's a grant application that Chief Hawk found, uh, that he's going through in the process is just, uh, this resolution basically says we're going to do this for at least two years and continue it. Um, that's the simplicity of what the requirement for the grant application needed. And that's what this takes care of.
Okay. Chief Hawk's come on the microphone. Anyone have any?
Yeah, questions, anybody?
Overhand? No.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks Chief Hawk. Thanks Chief Hawk for saving some money. That gives you more stuff to spend in your budget on something else. Good job.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good job.
I, I got a coupon right here somewhere.
I know you do. I know you do.
Mr. President, do you have a question? I'm sorry.
Um, no, so this, so we got a grant to cover half of the cost. If we're successful here, it'll cover the other.
That's the plan. That's it in a nutshell. A grant to cover a grant.
Yeah.
Our part of the grant. Did I misspeak, ma'am?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, perfect. When are the body worn cameras?
So I have, uh, Mr. Singer asked that last meeting. I have, uh, an email into them. I know the salesman that I've been in touch with is a very busy man from what I'm told. So he has not replied yet, but, uh, when I get an answer, I'll share it.
Thank you, chief. Uh, would anyone like to entertain a motion for the body worn cameras? Grants.
Um, I will. Motion to adopt tenorly identified resolution number nineteen, declaring support for the participation of the town of McCandless Police Department and the Allegheny County Chief of Police Association Body Worn Camera, BWC Grant Program funded through the Bureau of Justice Assistance and guaranteeing the funding of the BWC program for at least two years past the grant period if awarded.
Second, Dr. Rafa, okay? Any comments before we vote? Yeah. Okay, everyone in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Ms. Zachary, would you like to make the motion for the planning commission?
Um, the planning commission nominating committee moves to, uh, appoint Ann L. Clark to the planning commission for the unexpired term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-four.
Second.
Second, Ms. Cleveland, uh, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Uh, next up, we have some representatives here from the MF, uh, the ambulance authority. Please. Welcome.
Good evening to you all. For those that don't remember, I was here like about, about two months ago. We didn't get out of here until ten thirty. So I think that tonight we're on a much better pace. Uh, and nobody's getting out of here at ten thirty. So that's certainly is good news. Uh, my name is Chris Dell, I'm the chief of the McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Service. Uh, I've officially been the new guy now for about three months. And I'm going to try and stick with that term as I'm going to ride that out as long as I possibly can. Uh, I'm, I'm actually joined this evening by two of my board members, uh, President Dawn Huber and our treasurer, um, Marsha Caliendo. Uh, two things to discuss, of course, I have sent the operations report. It should have been as, what you, second time you've received one at this point, just sort of highlighting the activities of the ambulance service within the community, uh, during the month and for the year to date. Uh, and then my other purpose of being here as the sort of update you, you all and, and request consideration for funding support for the ambulance service. You should have received the, the entire presentation and I have a real strong feeling that none of you want me to go through nineteen slides line by line. Cause that a fair consensus. I figured as much. I did want to discuss a few highlights, um, that I thought were of importance. Uh, the McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Service has been in existence and operating for forty-five years. Uh, we do believe we provide exemplary service. I certainly don't hear, uh, of us being called into the, uh, the council chambers per se to say what was wrong with this particular level of service. In fact, I can tell you, you know, from my experience in being here just the three months, uh, it's exactly the opposite. The level of service that is being provided within our communities is second to none. Uh, we are an advanced life support ambulance service, meaning that we have paramedics on all of the ambulances for all the calls that we respond to. Uh, and we're licensed by the Pennsylvania Department of Health. Uh, at this point, we're responding to nearly sixty-five hundred calls per year, uh, in McCandless. Uh, forty-five years is a long time. Uh, we've been pretty fortunate that we, the, the need to ask for money, uh, has been pretty much an all in void. It hasn't happened. I know there was a presentation in twenty twenty and there's been some considerations such since then, uh, but we're back, right? And, and, and we're, we're definitely in a situation of need. Um, when I first got into this business, even, even, even twenty-five years ago, so I've been doing this about thirty-four years. The model of ambulance service survival was you just kept expanding, right? You just picked up another community. Uh, and because you had more calls, you had more funding to come into the ambulance service and it's just how it worked. Uh, that doesn't work anymore. You know, that these days, you know, the, the bigger your service area, the greater the demands are for your service. And unfortunately, you know, where the call volume was going up, unfortunately, the insurance companies are paying you less, right? So there's a whole lot of, uh, imbalance, you know, quite frankly, that's going on. Uh, our current funding structure is simply not adequate, right? And we're essentially losing money, not essentially, we are losing money every time we go out the door. And, uh, we just can't afford to keep going that way. An example of some of our costs, of course, uh, we have a new ambulance, right? So the new ambulance unfortunately is two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars worth of vehicle. And, uh, yeah, new heart monitor. Nobody realizes, you know, that these things cost, and in that particular case, a new heart monitor, which we always need six, you know, they're thirty-five thousand dollars apiece, right? So of course the same thing goes with the staff. We all need raises every year of the staff, uh, the cost of the benefits, everything just keeps going up. And unfortunately, the insurance companies keep figuring out ways to pay us less. Uh, and of course, when, when communities and, and, and human beings don't have money, what do they not pay first? They pay their water bill, they pay their electric bill and we want them to. Unfortunately, they don't pay the ambulance service, right? So, uh, we do what we can to help the community by offering the subscription program, uh, which there certainly is a good thing. The downside for that is when we're offering a subscription, the person pays us ninety dollars so that, so that they don't later on possibly have to pay us say three or four hundred dollars, you know? So we really take a gamble, you know, every time we, uh, offer a subscription program. Um, in, in a nutshell, with respect to the funding, you know, at the current rate that we're structured, uh, the ambulance service would probably be, could be non-existent within the next few years. Please understand that we are doing all we can, you know, to control our costs. Uh, we've really worked very diligently on the next year's budget. Uh, made a whole lot of changes i- in, in some of the services that were, uh, being utilized by the ambulance service that we've been able to, uh, cut those costs. We actually believe we, we made about two hundred and thou- two hundred some thousand dollars worth of changes, uh, in, in some of those items areas for twenty twenty-three. We did start a capital campaign that we're sending out to the community, uh, that's actually in our, uh, what we call our northern communities. Uh, at this time, while the residents of McCandless and Franklin Park are receiving their subscription, those folks receive the capital campaign and that's a request, quite frankly, for the communities to assist us and residents and assistance, uh, and buying another new ambulance. Uh, we're also, of course, spending a lot of time seeking grants for our capital expenses, expenses, uh, as much as we possibly can. Do we get a lot of those grants? Not necessarily, but we work hard, you know, to do everything we can to keep our costs as low as possible. I did also attach in that presentation, our Kent, our ten-year, uh, capital expenditures plan. Uh, I hope that sort of gives you an idea of what we look like. Uh, I also of course know that one of the slides shows you, this is how much money we have in the bank today. This is how much, you know, our, our, they anticipate operationally losing potentially during the, the coming years, uh, as well as what are our capital, capital expenses, uh, during those same periods. Ultimately, what I'm here, uh, I'm here asking you to help us, help you. Uh, we believe we provide an essential public service, uh, at the highest level we can possibly provide. We are looking for the community's support, uh, for a long-term future for the ambulance service, a long-term future of, of your residents and the residents of the community, uh, having quality, uh, EMS. And, uh, I did provide a municipal sport example as one of the appendix, uh, items on the documentation or the presentation. Do you have any questions of me? I, I, it's, it's a lot of information. Uh, so I was helpful. I was thankful that, that some of the staff here were able to uh, help me overcome some very technical difficulties that would have occurred, of course, on, uh, Friday afternoon, when you're at the deadline and you're like, okay, I'm going to have to, the computer network went down. I actually had to bring a flash drive over and send it to you folks that way. So just the kind of luck I was having that day. Uh, but any questions or any comments from Dawn or Marsha?
Thanks, sure. First of all, this is Chris's second meeting tonight. He's already at Marshall. So, um, we're doing this with every, uh, borough and municipality that we serve. Okay? Um, and what I can say is you have all the numbers there. They are good numbers. And this board and Chris have worked the last couple of months. He's been around three months. Last week we saved a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on new votes on healthcare and things like that. We are working to keep ourselves viable. Okay? And I have to tell you, I sat in your chair nineteen ninety to ninety-five-ish as a Ross Township commissioner. I voted five times for money for the EMS in Ross Township. It's not easy. It's taxpayer dollars. You, you know that. I know that. I know we're asking the taxpayer dollars. But we have a duty to provide this service to our community. And we're going to ask all the, all the communities to do that. Right now Franklin Park's, that's forty-three thousand dollars. You give us a check? Roughly. You as McCandless give us in-kind services, which are great. We appreciate those. However, in-kind services don't pay for a new stretcher, which costs eighty thousand bucks. So I'm here, I understand. I know that it's not easy as, cause I think we're asking them for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in one year. I don't know how many sales and taxes that is, but, uh, that ain't cheap, but we have a, a duty. And we're doing our best to save as much money for as long as we can. Yes, we have a million dollars in the bank. Probably by the end of this year, next year, we'll still have about a quarter million. But after that, the way we have to spend money to keep units on the ground or on the road and how we get to pay paramedics, anything else, it's going to be tough. So the need is there and it's not, it's not, we're not asking for a lot that we don't need. So that's how I just say, Marsha. Thanks for listening here. I appreciate it.
Anything. Bless you. Yeah. Bless anybody on council.
Yeah, um, my one question would be, um, thank you for your time. Thank you for the presentation. One thing that stands out to me is I'd like to see, um, so, some record or report of your grant opportunities you've had over like the last ten years.
Sure.
Where you've applied for, what you've received, where that is, that would be something I would appreciate.
My best. History.
I understand.
I, I will do my darnest to get all of that that I possibly can.
Thank you.
Anybody on my left that questions?
Just, I think it, it would be wrong if we didn't mention the fact that the reorganization itself helped save money too. And I don't know if council knew that, but.
Sure.
That helped to save money.
It did.
Anyone, uh, Kim or Jack, which is going remotely, any questions? Comments? Comments?
None for me.
Yeah, I had one question, Chris.
Sure.
So, uh, when you look at the service statistics in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, you guys were averaging about eighty two hundred calls a year. And over the last three years, it's gone down to sixty four hundred, okay, there's something, I mean, COVID, but other than, but if Jason, who has a, a small business, with his customers went down by twenty percent, he would cut twenty percent of his staff, so like, your staff costs are going up. Your number of trips are going down twenty percent, why are they going in the?
I think there's a number of things, because I, I, I expected that question, I'm glad you're asking it. I think that, that, uh, a lot of that wasn't all necessarily, uh, ambulance transported patients, but I think back then, there was a period of time when the ambulance service did a really good job of documenting every ambulance move, right? So if they were dispatched for, uh, a standby or a fire standby, those types of things, they were including those, and that, that's where that eighty two hundred number comes from. And it appears that there's been, was a change at some point with respect to how they were documenting, uh, and they've stopped document, they had stopped documenting some of those responses. Uh, because that eighty two hundred, the two thousand calls, I mean, like, that's just an impossible number to, uh, think uh, that, that, that the call volume has gone away and that the, uh, staffing has stayed the same. I do know that there has been a lot of shift in staffing, again, I'm new, I'm only there three months, but from things that I, uh, know and understand and can see from a historical perspective, there has been, you know, cuts, uh, in the number of personnel that are working, uh, with respect even the wheelchair van. At one point, I believe the ambulance service operated, you know, four or five wheelchair van, uh, it's vehicles to operate, uh, around the, the agent, around the area. Uh, and that has dropped off substantially because the call volume has dropped off, but, uh, yeah, I don't think the eighty two hundred, uh, is completely reflective of actual, you know, calls, uh, I think that, 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 and, and also would say that maybe the sixty two hundred is a low number, you know, because I, I certainly have gone back to the ambulance, to the folks and said, why aren't we documenting the fact that we were dispatched for that fire call, uh, it, it's, it's a responsibility of ours to either respond or at least monitor that call. It is a dispatched call, you know, that we need to have documentation of, you know, so it is a.
I'd just like to make a point too, there's the cost of readiness. And we service, we have three stations, we're in Pine for twelve hours, and that's probably primarily because of traffic door on nineteen, we want to have a, uh, a truck up there, and then we have full-time Franklin Park, and then full-time right next door to us. So we have to have three separate staffing as well at each of those places. So we, we need to be on the ready, and there's a cost associated with the, with that. And that's something that, you know, if we have a downturn for a year or so, we still have to staff and have those stations operative, so we have to have the staff though. So I understand what you're saying, and it's, it's valid, but we all, you have to recognize we have to be there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and, and when we were, the cost that we show there, you know, those, those are the cost of, you know, lighting the station, so putting gasoline in the vehicle. You know, all of the costs, uh, are entered into those figures that we're being able to provide.
Is technology taking business from you, like telemedicine or Uber?
Yeah, we do believe it has, you know, uh, I don't know so much about the Uber situation, or there, there's been talk about that, you know. Uh, but this isn't just a McCandless problem, uh, I feel like, you know, one of just about every EMS chiefs that I'm familiar with uh, is asking their municipalities for support, because no ambulance services can, quite frankly, make it uh, on just providing the services that we provide, no matter how hard you try to cut your costs, and believe me, these folks know uh, I'm working super hard, you know, with their support, uh, at getting the costs in line, you know, and, uh, there's only so much we can do, so that comes out too.
Anyone else have any questions from council? No, okay. Thank all of these.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on here, uh, is there any public comment on any non-agenda, uh, items? Please come to the name and address and.
Yeah, read mark one oh five eight five Grubstone.
And I would like to say first that when you list the ambulance service um, presentation, M F P A A sometimes means nothing to citizens. It would be really good, I think a lot of people care about that, and that if you wrote it out, it would help. I had no idea what that was until I got here. Okay, that being said. First, I, I want to thank town council for the opportunity to serve in the council's community on various committees. Giving back to the community the core value of mine. Recently, you honored me with an appointment to the personnel board. It's a position that has at its heart the ability to affect public safety, which is the most important aspect of local government. A community's commitment to excellent fire, police, and ambulance service is its badge of honor. These are the professional men and women who come in the most difficult situations and impact our lives with their skills, integrity, and reliability. To my point, Wednesday, September twenty first, there was an executive session of the personnel board in which opinions, responses, and viewpoints were exchanged civilly. This was followed by an open session in which a vote was taken on a motion. Jack Casey is one of the two liaisons to this committee, and to his credit, he rarely misses a meeting. When the meeting ended, Jack turned to me and verbally attacked me because of the vote that I made. He has every right to discuss my vote with me, but no right to approach me with red face, finger pointing and threatening with a warning that he will be here for four years. Mr. Casey made accusations that had little to do with the matter before the board, but rather sought to demean me and his vicious lurching was certainly not the actions of someone who holds a position of responsibility. His behavior did not include any physical assault, but I felt like his aggressive reprimand was no less than a verbal smack in the face. He called me a liar because my perspective on how certain matters were being handled. He accused me of collaborating with another board member, and yet there could be no collaborating because that's against the rules, besides, we weren't even on the same page. He accused me of being anti-veteran, and I'm the daughter and wife of veterans. He accused me of being part of some group that protested the use of military weapons. Yet it's my veterans that fought for my right to protest and my right to have a different opinion than Mr. Casey. Man knows nothing about me, how I think, behave, and certainly not groups, what groups I belong to, or may belong to in the future. I adamantly question whether this is the acceptable conduct of a council member. It certainly is not how a volunteer doing their best to contribute their ideas and talents and time should be treated. Jack must want everyone to think like him, to vote the way he does. I welcome civil discourse, but this crossed a line into his red face, finger pointing rant because I have a different view of the proceedings and handling of matters before this committee. I want to call Mr. Casey's inappropriate behavior to the attention of town council, so that it never happens to another volunteer again. Thank you for this opportunity.
Is there any other public comment on non-agenda items? Anyone else on? Okay. Uh, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Second. Yeah, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.